I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Into the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
As some of you may know, every year at this time, we're legally mandated to reorganize, appoint our committees, and appoint our leadership. To that end, the process is, we have a nomination for the temporary chair of Board of Supervisors. And I'd like to nominate Ed Brandt if Ed Brandt is willing, and I would need a second.
A second.
Yeah, Ed Brandt, will you take the role as temporary chair for the Board of Supervisors?
It's your last chance here.
Last year, last organizational meeting. Yes, ladies and gentlemen, now in front of us is the position of Chair of the Board of Supervisors for the year 2021 of Lower Gwinnett Township. Is, do I hear a motion to appoint somebody, or nominate somebody to be Chair of the Board of Supervisors for 2021?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Mark Gray to be Chair.
All right. Is there a second?
A second, the motion.
All right, the motion's been moved, seconded. Are there any other nominations?
Hearing no other nomination, call for a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mark, congratulations, being appointed as Chairperson of Lower Gwinnett Township for the year 2021.
Thank you very much, Ed, and all of you, for your confidence in me in the coming year. Next on the agenda, we have a nomination for the position of Vice Chair for the Board of Supervisors. Is there a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that Danielle Duckett continue as Vice Chair for this coming year.
I have a second. I'll second it. All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you. Welcome, Danielle. I have a motion to approve the recording of the Board of Supervisors meetings. Can I have a motion, please?
Go move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you. Next up is an appointment for the delegates and alternate delegates at the PSATs Convention. Now, we didn't have a PSATs last year, and we're not sure what this year is going to bring either. I have no idea. But we still should have a primary and a secondary.
I have a motion for Tessie to be the primary.
Okay, I'll have a second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you, Tessie.
Thank you, yes. Now I need a motion for an alternate delegate. Do I have a motion for an alternate?
Kathy Hunsinger?
Yeah, could I have a second for Kathy?
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, can I just say that registration for the PSATs Convention is January 12th? So if any of everyone can get back to us, whether you're, when you're going, how many days, and all that, if we register you on the 12th, it's more likely that you'll get the choice of the hotel rooms. If not, we have to just put you where you go, so.
Is there an option for it to be virtual at this point? They're not, they're all in person?
I'm not sure about the virtual. They're still thinking it's going to be in person. I don't know how likely that is, but we can check that out, and we'll get back to you on that, Danielle.
Okay, thank you.
Craig, I think our registration carried over from last year because I've got a packet already.
Yep, but we still have to re-register you even if you're registered, and then we have to take you off if you're not going. So it's kind of paperwork, so.
Greg?
Yes.
Greg, could you give me the dates then of that meeting?
It's April 18th to the April 21st.
Okay, and the deadline to let you know for registration for hotels?
It would be the 11th because it would be open on the 12th at nine o'clock.
All right, the 11th, okay. All right, thanks, Greg.
Okay, thank you.
Let me go to that for one last runaround.
Great. Okay, well, Ed, you've been there more than once, so.
Oh, yeah. But I would highly recommend it to Danielle and Tessie. I think they'll be very impressed with how organized, a lot of meetings. But from talking to you, Mark, and Kathy, and myself, you have to go with an agenda rather than just go in with the crowd. You have to figure out what do you want to see, what you don't want to see, what sub meetings and so forth, because they throw a lot at it when you first get there.
They sure do. There's a lot of breakout sessions in that, in that organization. Yeah, it's very good, it's very good. Okay, next up is the Chair's Chair Comments. Well, we've had a heck of a year. Unfortunately, at the township anyway, things have gone well. Everybody's healthy. Protocols have been put in place, and they've been followed through the year, and that's resulted in a very safe, healthy workforce, in a workforce that's out there to help our citizens with any issues, complaints, or concerns, and to service all the things that you don't see, the roads, the plowing, the garbage pickup, the parks, the police, the fire, all of that. It's gone really well. We're very, very fortunate. And just so all of you are aware that Montgomery County Community College is a site for the A1 level of vaccinations that's going to start soon, I believe it's this week. And the goal is 1,000 doses a day. So the county's been very fortunate. They've gotten tens of thousands of doses, and they've already distributed them to the hospitals. And we're following, or the county is following, the recommended inoculations from the federal government. So Montgomery County Community College is close by, and hopefully they'll be hitting their 1,000 inoculations a day. Next is, I'd like to also announce, because we just got this information last week, our fire service, North Penn. For many, many, many years, we've been trying to get North Penn a grant. There's a program at the state level for a million dollar grant with a matching fund from the township of $400,000, which we have budgeted for, and an additional $100,000, and I'm not sure where that's going to come from exactly, but thanks to all of the efforts and our state rep, Liz Hambridge and Kate Harper, because this has been going on for years, they got the grant. They've got $1 million to upgrade their firehouse. Yes, it's needed. They didn't even have an emergency generator at that firehouse. So hopefully they'll get all of those things squared away. Lower Gwinnett's contribution, because it's, you know, it's, we have to contribute to, it's just not all state money, is $400,000, and we put this in the budget every year now, hoping we would get it, and they got it. So that is great news, and we're upgrading our fire service because of that. And just so the people on this call know it, the fire service is, they're volunteers. You know, I hear it all the time that they're employees. No, they're not, they're volunteers. They do a great job, and over the years, the township has increased the contributions over and above the fire tax. So this past year, 2020, there was $360,000 of Lower Gwinnett taxpayer money that went to the fire service. North Penn got 108,000 of it, and Wissahicken got 252,000. And the reason for that is North Penn has a third, about a third of the township, and Wissahicken has the remainders. So that's how it's allocated. That's a lot of resources, and this is, both of them are shared fire services. So it's just not Lower Gwinnett that's kicking in for that. But our fire service is, you know, well-needed, well-deserved, any contributions they get. And we're trying to strengthen the fire service, and I think we've done that, and the fire service is strong, and hopefully it'll get stronger through the years. The next thing I'd like to mention for those.
Mark, if I may.
Yes, Ed.
One of the goals I have my last year here is to give or create in Lower Gwinnett a tax rebate for those volunteers that run fires that live in Lower Gwinnett. We, as its township and other townships, do not credit these volunteers in any way, shape, or form for a tax rebate of some type. So it's something that our staff and the supervisors, I think we should look into during the year, and hopefully by the end of the year, or before then, we could pass something that would benefit those individuals that volunteer and get up 24/7 and run fires and live in Lower Gwinnett. Because it's strictly volunteer for them, we do contribute to equipment and buildings, but I think it's time for us to give an incentive for residents of Lower Gwinnett that volunteer their time to run these volunteer fires. So it's just something I want to put on the docket for 2021 for us to investigate, if I may.
Very good, good recommendation, Ed, and I see Craig is already taking notes.
Okay.
So we'll look and see what we need to do.
Mark, one other thing, getting back to the inoculations on the vaccines over at the Community College. I have a question for Craig, unless you already know the answer. When residents of Lower Gwinnett asked, how do they find out this information? Do they strictly go through the county app? And some seniors do not have computers. How do we communicate with the residents as for the scheduled program, starting with the hospital personnel which have already been lined up? And how, what answer does Craig with the township recommend us to give to residents who ask us that question?
Well, when I looked at, there was a lot of that information was on the county website.
Right.
There's also been a newspaper, North Penn Reporter, I believe, published the county's position on it, where and when and how. I'm quite certain that the nursing homes and retirement homes, they have their own schedule.
Yes.
In other words, they're a high priority, people in convalescent areas, they're a high priority. So other than the county, Craig, do you have any specific information?
We can continue to put it on the website as an update. As the levels, the steps go in, right now, it's, you know, the highest level, it's the people in the hospital workers and so forth, but we can.
Greg, are you talking about the county website or our website?
We can link updates when we send out the email blast. We can put the link to the county website from our website, so that's.
All right. Now, what do you recommend for us to get to the seniors that, and I, there are a number down here at the Meadows, that do not use a website, do not use computers?
Well, the best answer would be to call the county health department.
For that?
Yeah, because they would have the immediate answers to that. If you call the township, we're going to just call the county health department and ask, so.
Okay.
We will try to keep everyone informed that way, but their best bet is to contact the county health.
Okay, and then it's something we may make available to our residents and all the supervisors and the staff as for what that number is. So, all right, I'll get that from you. Thank you for answering the question.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I thank you for letting me interrupt your agenda.
No, it's very important, Ed, you're good. And last, last point of interest, the Archdiocese and Gwinnett Mercy University have posted a a joint notice that the seminary for the Archdiocese, the plan right now is to move it to Gwinnett Mercy University from its current location. So that was pretty exciting. It's a real jewel in Lower Gwinnett's cap to have, you know, one of the largest seminaries in the country, moving to Lower Gwinnett. I thought that was a very, very interesting announcement. It's a beautiful campus, and I think they'll be welcome here in Lower Gwinnett. So on to the appointments. So there's a number of appointments here, so I'm going to change this up just a little bit. First off, I'm going to give every, just so we can get through all of the appointments.
Mark, can we just talk about the meeting dates? That's next on the agenda.
Meeting dates are not next on my agenda.
Establishment of the meeting dates?
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right, establishment of the meeting dates, okay. The meeting dates are all in the last page of the agenda, upcoming meeting dates. There is one change to the meeting dates, is zoning, it's 6:00 PM. And I need a motion to accept the meeting dates?
I'll move.
And I have a second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you. Okay, so in order to get through all these appointments, and thanks for keeping me on track here, Greg, I'm going to do this a little bit differently than I did last year, or was done last year. So I'm going to read each person and their, the position they're being appointed to. We're going to vote as a block after I've done reading each one of those. If any supervisor has a question on any of the appointments, we can handle that after I've done announcing who's been appointed to what. And there will be a two-minute limit because there's so many appointments. Each supervisor can speak for two minutes before we have to move on to either another supervisor's comment or onto another appointment. So does everybody understand exactly what I'm saying? I think it was clear. Okay, all right, the appointment of a township manager, Secretary of Treasury is Craig McNally. Appointment of Assistant Secretary is Carol Culber. Appointment of Assistant Treasurer is Jamie Warman. Appointment of Solicitor is Kaplan Stewart. Appointment of a conflict attorney is the Law Offices of Thomas J. Spears. Appointment of the Township, so, excuse me, Appointment of the Township Sewer Solicitor is Timoney Knox. The Appointment of the Labor Council is Eckard Siemens. Appointment of the Township Engineer is Gilmore and Associates, Inc. The Appointment of a Sewer Engineer is ATC Group Services, BCM Engineering. An Appointment of a Conflict Township Engineer is CKS Engineers. The Appointment of a Traffic Engineer is McMahon Associates. The Appointment of a Building Inspector is Keystone Municipal Inspectors. The Appointment of a Township Planner is Ken Amy. The Appointment of a Zoning Officer is Ken Amy. The Appointment of Assistant Zoning Officer is Craig McNally. The Appointment of an Open Records Office Officer is Carol Culber. The Appointment of a Lower Gwinnett Representative to the Amber Wastewater Treatment Plant is Fred Zollers. The Appointment of a Sewer Building Process Service is Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority. The Appointment of a Chief Administrative Officer for Pension Plans is Craig McNally. The Appointment of a Pension Investment Advisor is PFM Financial Advisors. The Appointment of an Actuary is CBIZ Savitz, that's C-B-I-Z Savitz. The Appointment of a Certified Public Accountant Firm is Barbara King Thornton. The Appointment of a Supplementary Accounting Service is Dumlap and Associates. The Appointment of a Farm Marshal and Assistant Fire Marshal, Al Comley, is the Fire Marshal, and we're appointing Matthew Trainor from North Penn Fire Company as the Assistant Fire Marshal. And the Appointment of Emergency Management Coordinator is Frank Baxter. So I'm going to do that as a block, and I have a motion to accept the block.
So moved.
I have a second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If we can so note on the appointment of a solicitor with Kaplan Stewart, that it'd be Neil Stein also, his name? Is there a problem with that?
Well, we appointed the other ones based on the firm name.
Yeah.
You understand what I'm saying, so we're trying to keep everybody the same.
All right, just so the people know, if they have to call, if they called the firm, the firm would put them in touch with Neil.
Okay, yeah, Neil, you're the primary contract, right?
As far as I know, I'm the only contact.
Very good, Neil, good answer, I like that answer.
I tried for you, Neil, I tried.
Thank you, Ed.
Okay, so I'm going to have the same process for commissions and boards. So for zoning hearing board, we have a three-year term for Dennis Daley and Robert Nagel. For Parks and Rec Board, a five-year term, we have one open position. So there's no, there's no one to appoint. For the vacancy board, we have a one-year term, Deborah Schaefer. For the EAC, we have a three-year term, Ray Onahan, Susan Smith, Azalowski, and Steve Stafford. For the Veterans Committee, one-year term is Dick Target, Steve Yusom, Bill Wagner, and Bill Mayer. For Park Fest, a one-year term, Linda Schumacher, Jennifer Green, Chuck Green, Hillary Goodman. Liaison to Community Ambulance Association of Ambulors, one-year term, and that's Mary Ann New. Okay, and that is everybody. Can I have a motion to accept the blocks as stated?
So move.
And I have a second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I do have an aye, but I just want to back out the volunteer for the vacancy board. I believe that position mandate somebody who's unbiased and apolitical, so to speak, and Ms. Schaefer, thank you for putting yourself forward, but Ms. Schaefer is a Democratic Committee person, and I think that would undermine her unbiased nature in if she ever had to make a decision. So just back that one out there, but everyone else, I'm very happy to cast a yea.
All right, so Craig, please make a note that we have one no vote for Deborah Schaefer. Is there any other no vote for any other candidate and/or including Ms. Schaefer?
I would like to second what Kathy recommended on the vacancy board. It usually is, and when it was created years ago, someone not political, as she so stated, so I'll second her motion.
So we have two no votes for Deborah Schaefer.
Am I ammued? No. I am a no vote for Robert Nagel.
Okay. Very good. Are there any other objection to any of the other names? Okay, motion passes as read.
Mark?
Yes.
Can we say a couple of words about how we're going to fill the vacancy for the Park and Rec Board?
Can we hold that to the end under Supervisor Comments?
Sure.
Okay, we actually have another section here, Establishment of the Supervisor Committees. So we can talk about that.
Okay.
Just in a couple of minutes, okay. Next up is a resolution, 2021-1, Adoption of the Resolution Establishing Approved Depositories for Lower Gwinnett Township Funds in 2021. Can I have a motion to approve the depositories?
Question, question.
Please go ahead.
Is there any change, I'm asking the manager this, are you recommending any change from the previous year? Or is this a carryover to our current established depositories?
Yes, every year we have to pass this resolution to show all the depositories, these are all the same from last year.
Okay.
No change.
All right, thank you, no change.
Okay, so can I have a motion to accept our resolution 2021-01?
So moved.
Have a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes. Resolution 2021-02, Adoption of a Resolution Establishing Holidays for Township Employees for the Year 2021. And I don't believe there's any changes to the holiday schedule, Craig?
No, there's no changes to that.
Okay.
Well, I'd like the board to keep open the possibility of a new holiday for 2021, and that would be Kiss COVID Goodbye Holiday, where we would party on Bethland Pike or wherever, but just as it just, I think we're all anxious to kiss this COVID goodbye, but it's only mentioned as a comment.
Okay, well, Ed, you're a nice guy, but no, I'm not going to kiss you, but we're good, okay.
All right.
Do I have a motion to accept resolution 2021-02?
Ten minutes are moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, next up is resolution 2021-03, Adoption of a Resolution Approving the Execution and Assigning a Payroll Between Regular Meetings for 2021. Any questions on that? Same thing we do every year, we just need.
Make a motion to adopt 2021-03?
Okay, can I have a second?
Second.
All those, all those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you. Resolution 2021-04, Uniform Employees Pension Plan, Approval of, Greg?
This is, yeah, this is a resolution to approve the 5% contribution made by the uniform officers to their pension.
To their pension, right, their contribution, right.
Yes.
Are there any questions for the Township Manager relative to the pension?
Make a motion, we approve 2021-04.
Okay, can I have a second?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, Approval of Fee Schedule. Now, when I took a look at it, the fee schedule looked like there might have had a few changes, Craig, or is this the same as last year's?
This has been the same since 2017, but we approve it every year.
Okay, all right, can I have a motion to approve the fee schedule?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, next up is a motion to approve the prevailing IRS 2021 mileage rate. It's 56 cents a mile. Are there any questions from the supervisors? Now, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, next is Establishment of Supervisor Committees for 2021. So we've had two new requests for committees, and one is the historical. And, um, one is the, the, uh, historical committee. Now, we've talked about having an historical committee now for many, many years. Uh, we've never done it. Uh, I think it's a great idea. I think, uh, Lower Gwinnett's got some great history. Um, there's some other townships in the area that have, um, uh, you know, a, a history focus as well. We have some, uh, history memorabilia in the lobby. Uh, talks about Lower Gwinnett's history as a farming township, and there's artifacts on display there. I think they're rotated once a month, Craig, or is it every other month?
They were being rotated once a month, but, uh, during COVID, it hasn't been rotated.
Yeah, so it's pretty, there's a whole, uh, display chest out there, but we want to formalize this. So, um, I thought, well, the best way to do this is establish a, uh, a committee to do it. Um, and we're gonna have to have a couple of supervisors on that committee as well. So what I would like to do is have a motion to explore setting up a, uh, historical commission in the township uh, for that person, uh, for that purpose.
So moved.
Are there any other comments from the supervisors?
That's Tessie's motion.
Okay, Tessie, can I have a motion?
Uh, I, I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, explore setting up a historical, uh, commission for Lower Gwinnett and populate it with, well, we can, uh, leave the rest of that off. We'll just explore, uh, what we want to do, how many people on the committee and so forth.
Yes, establish, uh, citizen volunteers. We're gonna need volunteers for sure.
Yeah.
No doubt about it. Uh, so can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Uh, next up is a communications, uh, subcommittee. So for those of that you, those of you that don't know, which is probably most of the people on the call, we awarded a, uh, contract, uh, for communications consultants to do a, uh, uh, high-level, uh, overview of how we can improve communications in the township. Um, we're, we're trying to do that. It's important to do that. Um, we've talked about it in the past. We haven't done it. Um, so I would like to, and we've awarded a contract. So once we get the results of the contract, we need to do something about it. The best way to do something about it is to establish a communications committee, sub, our subcommittee. Again, it's gonna, we're gonna need volunteers from our community on it, and we're gonna need a couple of supervisors on that committee. Just like all of our other subcommittees, uh, that, uh, Ed Brand established many, many years ago, uh, the committee system. So, uh, I'd, I'd like to have a, a motion to, uh, establish a communications committee. Uh, are there any questions?
I think it's a great idea, Marsh. They had that.
So, uh, is that your motion, Ed? We'll count that as your motion. So can I have a, can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Um, receipt of the minutes, uh, for December the eighth, twenty twenty. Can I have a motion to accept the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Receipt of invoice history from November twenty twenty, and I have a motion.
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Uh, next up, public comments, citizens' comments, concerns or questions for any items that's, that's not on the agenda. Are there any questions out there from the public?
Yes, I have a comment.
Okay, you have to introduce yourself and, uh, your address, please.
Yes, do I need to put the video on or?
No, you don't have to.
Okay. Um, my name is Lisa Matthews. I'm a property owner on, uh, North Surrey Drive. And I've been a resident here in Lower Gwinnett since, uh, two thousand sixteen. And I worked for the Wissaken School District for over fifteen years. I am. My husband and I, uh, would like to file a complaint regarding a zoning violation on Surrey, Surrey Drive. This has been an ongoing issue and a serious problem.
Uh, Lisa, if I may.
For about a year.
Lisa? Lisa?
Yes.
This is Ed Brand speaking. Nineteen ninety-three, I started a subcommittee system whereby two members of the Board of Supervisors will meet with you and listen to your complaint along with the manager and or assistant manager. So that, uh, your complaint will be heard by management and uh, at least two supervisors will make sure that your complaint is dealt with. I recommended at that time that, um, the manager and assistant manager would let us know what, and if you would come in uh, to the township or, uh, uh, set up communication so that we can address your issue uh, personally and a better way than at a public meeting. That two supervisors, along with the staff, uh, would be glad to meet with you and entertain a year complaint about a property or anything in the township. So what I'm recommending is that you take me up on that. It's been successful for the last twenty-seven years, and, uh, we have, have never had anybody come back to the board to say they were not handled professionally, either by the board or by the staff. So if I can recommend to you to take that step and opportunity, I think, um, we could, uh, open a door for you to hear the complaint completely rather than at this public meeting.
Supervisor Brandt, uh, I would just like to say that, uh, the Matthews, uh, have had this issue. I live in the neighborhood, it's, so it's, uh, also affecting me directly. It is not unknown, uh, to our, uh, management, uh, in the township building. I recommended, I actually encouraged the Matthews to come forward, uh, so that the board will understand we have some shortcomings, I think, in some of our, um, zoning regulations that are allowing this, uh, very, uh, untenable problem to persist.
Okay.
And so it is a real, uh, issue, uh, that we need to tackle. Uh, maybe not tonight.
I, I was not aware, Tessie, that they approached you. And if you're in favor of them continuing with this presentation at this time, then I'll revert to you.
I just wanna just interject, I'm in favor of anybody that has public comment, making their public comment in full during this period.
It's not, it's not public comments. Uh, I'm talking about digging into a problem completely. And if we all did that at a meeting, our meetings would go on and on. It's not public comments. I'm in favor of public comments, but this seems to be a major problem that has to really get dealt into, so.
Just again, if anybody that's a citizen of Lower Gwinnett wants to make any comment, I'm in favor of them doing it during the public comment period.
Is this the? Is this the lighting issue?
Yes, it is.
Okay, can you just, um, continue, please? Thank you.
Thank you. So I guess our questions and com- comments, concerns are directed to zoning or anyone else, um, who that, you know, may feel they need to get involved to enforce the court's orders. So as some of you may know, there's been this zoning violation regarding lights on Surrey Drive, more specifically our next-door neighbor um, who are tenants. So violations, these violations that, that have sent the property owner and his tenants to court two times in twenty twenty. Once in July and once in December. Our understanding of the court ruling in July was that these excessively bright search-style lights were not permitted. And they needed to be removed. They are shining on our property, our house, our property through our house into our family room, our master bedroom windows every single night. They also prowled throughout the neighborhood in their cars as well as on foot with these search-style lights, spreading them into people's homes across their properties. So our understanding was the court back in July had said this was not permitted, that it was in violation of a zoning ordinance of Lower Gwinnett. We were told by zoning, they were gonna take care of the lights and start fining the property owner in July. Nothing has changed, nothing. The tenants have added lights. No fines have been assessed to the property owner. We, we are asking for your help. Who is enforcing the court orders? Again, in December, the court had ruled they were, the tenants made a deal with the property owner. The property owner said they can stay through January. Their lease was up November thirtieth. The property owner allowed them to stay through January as long as they remove those lights. They have not. Who is enforcing the court's rulings? I take pictures every night. I show where they're coming from, how they're hitting my house, how they're coming through my house. I don't understand. We need your help. We are taxpayers. We are disappointed in how the township has let this go on for over a year. A year. We are asking once again for your help to put an end to this.
Thank you, Lisa. Uh, Mr. Amy. Uh, are you able to shed any light on this?
Yes, yes, the, uh, Ms. Matthews is, is correct. There has been an ongoing problem out there. It has been a very, uh, very obtrusive problem to the neighbors on Surrey Drive. Uh, there have been, uh, multiple visits out there by, by me and by the police department. Uh, we have sent correspondence to the property owner. We have met with the tenants. Um, none of which has been successful in resolving this, and I understand the frustration. Uh, we have, we have not been able to, to reach, uh, any kind of an agreement that, um, that the tenant will abide by. We have, um, most recently, uh, I guess about two weeks ago, we sent a, a final enforcement notice to the owner of the property. And we, we told him to, uh, follow the court's order and remove the lights as, uh, as his tenants, he and his tenants both agreed they would do. Uh, they have not done so, and we have filed a citation with the district justice, and we've asked for the maximum penalty under the zoning ordinance. So that's, that's where we stand right now.
And, and the latest piece of correspondence I saw was that property owner seems to be, um, starting a bit the eviction process.
Well, he's, he's actually started the eviction process twice in the past.
Okay.
But he's, he's, he's starting the eviction process anew, uh, with this latest round of correspondence.
Isn't it correct right now during COVID, all evictions are on hold?
Uh, evictions had been on hold. They are not right now.
They're not, okay.
They are not.
Any advice from Neil Stein on this? Neil?
Um, Ed, I haven't really been involved in this. The first piece of correspondence I saw was the letter that was sent out maybe a week or so ago.
Any advice for the staff?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I would certainly proceed forward with the process of fining the property owner and the property owner's tenants. I would also suggest it might be appropriate to elevate it to the Court of Common Pleas and seek conjunctive relief. Um, and if necessary, drag the landlord and the tenants in front of the judge. Uh, if we're not getting any response at the district justice level. I can guarantee you, the Court of Common Pleas will take it very seriously.
Who does this, Neil? Who is the person? Are you the person that does this for us?
If asked to, I will be happy to do it.
Uh, well, on behalf of the neighbors on Surrey Drive, and it's not just one or two neighbors that are affected. It's multiple people on the street. And as, uh, Ms. Matthews mentioned, this has been going on for over a year. At various times, uh, we have been promised that, uh, the people were gonna be leaving, and it hasn't happened. And so, um, as, uh, Ms. Matthews has said, we're asking for some relief from the township.
Have we heard back from the district judge about the, uh, granting the, us to fine at the maximum level? Of course, that's still pending.
That's, that is pending.
And what is that maximum level?
A thousand dollars a day.
Uh, I would, I would be in favor of, um, having uh, Neil Stein get involved um, with Ken Amy and, um, get involved with this and, uh, especially in the fact that Neil mentions the Court of Common Pleas rather than moving a step higher from the district justice.
So, an established timeline, meaning is there a certain number of days that you have to give the magistrate in order to respond? If not, is there anything preventing us from expediting this to the Court of Common Pleas at this point?
I would recommend expediting it right now because there's no specific timeframe for the district justice to act. Um, so I, I would elevate it right now.
So Tessie and Lisa, or Lisa, you specifically mentioned that, uh, these tenants are prowling your neighborhood with these flashlights. I mean, isn't there a trespass, uh, going on here as well?
We have, we have asked zoning to support us. Um, they've never said that there was a trespassing issue. They do not go on anybody's property.
Okay.
Um, physically.
Mm-hmm.
But these lights, and I can't call them flashlights, they're these s- giant search excessively bright lights.
So odd.
Very. And go ahead, Tess.
Well, I, I was just gonna say, it's, um, there are, uh, we don't have to go into everything that has happened on, on our meeting right now, uh, Kathleen, but, uh, be assured that this has gone beyond, uh, any reasonable level. And it went beyond that level six or eight months ago. Um, so we, uh, we need some relief, and thank you very much, uh, Ed, for, uh, suggesting that Neil elevate this immediately. Um, I think that that is, uh, very worthwhile. Uh, it, this is actually consuming our township taxpayer money, uh, because, um, there are uh, false calls for police and fire officers, et cetera, to come out to the neighborhood. Uh, there was even a report to the FBI, uh, which was a false, a report. So this needs to end, and it needs to end, uh, quickly. And also, I'm, I would like to move that we address, uh, our, uh, codes to prevent something like this from persisting in the future.
Okay.
There needs to be, uh, some remedy that citizens have, uh, for this type of situation.
Well, my recommendation, Tess, uh, I'd like to make that in form of a motion that we turn this issue over to Neil Stein to work with. turn this issue over to Neil Stein to work with Ken Amy. And I'd like to make that in a form of a motion to get Neil working on this ASAP after hearing the comments from our resident Lisa and also yourself.
I would like.
To make that in the form of a motion.
Ed, can we add to your motion specifically that Neil take this to the Court of Common Pleas?
Yes, and that's his recommendation verbally to us.
So I second your motion.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. So Lisa, hopefully we can get you some more relief here.
Thank you very much.
And push this thing down the road to help you out.
Thank you very much for listening. I appreciate it.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you for coming, Lisa.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Are there any more citizens' comments or concerns?
This is Steve Haney on 904 Sari. I would just want to corroborate what Lisa said, even though we're not quite in proximity to the homeowners, their flashlights are quite obtrusive in shining into my daughter's bedroom. And also they, while they don't trespass, they, they can be intimidating when they walk around and I have seen them trespass on the property that's being constructed across the street using the porta potty a number of times, which I found obviously not quite favorable. So we support Lisa, right, and Tess and their opinion about these people and we would, you know, welcome the support of Neil Stein.
Okay, could I have your, your name and address again, please?
It's Stephen Haney and the address is 904 North Surrey Drive.
Thank you, Stephen.
You're welcome.
Are there any other comments? Anybody else got their hand raised, Craig?
I don't see any hand raised, but if anyone has a comment.
I, I just want to have one closing comment to Neil to ask that a review of the situation be conducted from your perspective to see if there are any ways that we can tighten up our ordinances to prevent this from happening again. Or a similar situation, it might be with noise in the future or some other really annoying situation. Well, this is beyond annoying. This is really to the level of harassment and it has been for a number of months.
Yeah, it's a, it's a, it sounds like it's a public nuisance. So I'm sure Neil will run this to ground.
Okay.
Ken, can you give me a file on this tomorrow, whatever you have? Absolutely.
Okay. And could I recommend that the staff keep the supervisors informed by way of at least an email or correspondence as how this proceeds in the courts?
Yep, I will put it in the manager's report, just like last week.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Other business, we have a paper shredding and e-cycling event scheduled for April the 17th. I'd like to put this, I'd like to table this. I'm not so sure we're going to have a shredding event in April based on our current COVID situation here. So let's, let's talk about this some more and we can vote on this and then in another meeting. Okay. Mr. Manager?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just if we can go back to the board's subcommittees, are all the others, members of, all the other subcommittees the same assignments as last year?
I want to talk to some of the other supervisors so I get input from everybody unless there's a desire to change that again. I'm going to, my plan is to keep it the same, but I'll be talking to each supervisor and see if they want to change anything up or be a member of one of the other subcommittees.
Okay, just we have, the, the next subcommittee would be Building and Zoning next Monday. So just trying to.
We're going to keep, I understand what you're saying.
Okay.
Right?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I only have, well, one thing, former police officer Al Elms passed away over the weekend. So I just want to send their condolences, our condolences to his family. His daughter used to work in the Building and Zoning Department as well, Gail Whitman. So I want to pass along our respects for him. And just the elected auditors will be organizing tomorrow morning at 8:30.
Okay. Craig, can I ask you a question about Officer Elms? I imagine that's going to be a private ceremony.
I tried to look for the obituary today, Mr. Brandt, and I could not find one.
All right. And you are sending an official condolences to the family from the supervisors?
Yes, we.
And staff?
Yes, we will. And I know Paul as well is sending it from the police department as well.
All right, all right. Thank you.
Supervisor comments, well, we start with you, Mr. Brandt.
Well, it's been a, 2020 has been a very trying year for all the residents of this country, as you know, and I'm looking forward to, as we all are, the recovery of this country in many, many ways. And that Lower Gwinnett will proceed and move as quick as we can based on the vaccines made available to all residents. I want to thank the staff for keeping the township in operation and in a safe manner, even though other, other businesses have shut down, Lower Gwinnett has not. I want to thank Craig and Jamie for doing that. I, I like to wish us all the best for 2021 and may there be great lights in the future. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. Kath?
Sure, well, I'll certainly second all that Ed said, but I'm in a looking forward mindset and I just want to thank our staff and our professional staff for remaining with Lower Gwinnett Township. It's a five star lineup. We're very fortunate to have you all and the same for the volunteers too. The Lower Gwinnett Township could not go around as, as well as it does without our volunteers. So we'll look forward to another rotation around the sun with all of my colleagues and Happy New Year.
Thank you, Kath. Danielle? Here, I'm you.
I first wish everybody Happy New Year and kind of echo what Kathleen and Ed said. Just, everybody has been wonderful as far as adapting to a new type of normal as it relates to the conducting the business of the township. Appreciate all the staff and all the professional staff coming together and rallying together to get everything done into keeping, keeping the township on track and exceeding all expectations that I had as far as what we could accomplish during a pandemic. Look forward to the future, look forward to getting back to a more typical, I don't know if we'll ever go back to things the way they were, but a typical working environment. Wishing everyone health and prosperity for this year.
Thank you. Tessie?
Yes, I also wish everyone a happy and prosperous new year and as the other supervisors have noted, we've got a tremendous, tremendously talented and dedicated staff and staff of volunteers who have carried on even under these circumstances that changed our way of life essentially over the last year. What I'm looking forward to, in addition to carrying on the business of the township in this coming year are our new committees and getting those up and running. I think the historic committee or commission will be really an asset to the, to the township and the communication committee. I'm really looking forward to getting that one set up and so we want to put out feelers to the community and get some more good volunteers like we've had on all of our other committees. And so please reach out to your friends and neighbors and talk about getting volunteer applications in for these new committees. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All great sentiment. I am surprised we've done as well as we have. And when you look at some surrounding townships and municipalities that had had to make some severe changes in their operations, we didn't have to. You know, thank goodness the citizens of Lower Gwinnett Township are, are, you know, enabled through their taxes to help us continue on with all of our efforts. Everything is, it surprised me that the degree of, of excellence that came out of the staff and, and with no complaints, at least from my point of view. Craig, you might have gotten some complaints or Jamie, but.
We don't get any complaints.
Yeah, we don't get any complaints, but the staff has done a great job and we've been able to keep our service level up. And there's no, no complaining, no moaning. You know, you couldn't ask for anything more than this. And we're ending the year on some good notes and we have a vaccine that's going to be available to everyone shortly. So I'm looking forward to 2021. I think it's going to be a great year, despite Jim Morris telling us that the stock market went down today, but that's okay. He can be the Debbie Downer and, and he can be that person and if that's the only thing that happens, we can handle it. We can handle it. Well, thank you, everybody.
So, Mr. Chairman, excuse me, before, I just wanted to piggyback on something that Tessie was touched on as far as recruiting volunteers for these two new committees and others that we kind of formally solicit for volunteers on our township website or however we did with the, the professional solicitations. And we might want to take a look at our volunteer application, even just a minor addition on there for an email address would be a big improvement. So those two are a little related and hopefully facilitate getting these committees off the ground and running sooner rather than later.
And just to piggyback on what Kathleen was saying, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but to let everybody know that we do have an open park and rec position and if anybody is interested in that, to submit volunteer application as soon as possible.
I'm glad you said that, Danielle. So we have three applications in, I believe, Mark. So we need to set up interviews. We need, maybe we need to extend the application deadline by a month or so, but we need to act on that opening. And I'm sorry, I didn't think of it till just now in our conversations. So I move that we have our manager arrange for maybe advertising this for another month and then initiating interviews to get a new volunteer.
I only have one other thing to add, if I may, and I, I second and third the comments about the volunteers and listening and applications and extensions, but I just want to go back to Lisa Matthews and not ask, but direct our manager, Neil Stein and Ken Amy to follow through back to Lisa Matthews as for where we're at on taking actions in the Court of Common Pleas on the complaint that she brought to the table tonight. So what I'm asking is that we have directed and made a motion and everybody was in favor of Neil moving on this. What I'm asking now is that we keep Ms. Matthews informed of where we're at step by step because what she has presented tonight was just, is just atrocious for that neighborhood. So that's what I'm asking.
Thank you, Mr. Brandt. Okay, so I think we're done for tonight. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you for attending.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Stay well.
Night, everyone.
Good night.
Night.